If everyone would please take their seats, we're going to get started with our meeting. Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock PM on Tuesday, February the thirteenth, 2024. I'd like to call the meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone that's here in our city council chambers, as well as our audience listening on WCBU. I'd also like to welcome the audience watching on cable channel twenty-two. Madam Clerk, council mics are open, please call the roll.
Mayor Ali, Councilmember Allen, Councilmember Seer, Councilmember Gordon Young, Councilmember Grayb.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly. Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Reganbach.
Here.
Councilmember Valpula. And Councilmember Vespa.
Here.
You have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Everyone, please join me and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, I have a special notice I want to read. This is a notice to our township electors pursuant to Public Act zero-nine-five-dash-zero-seven-six-one. If you desire to have an item considered on the agenda at the annual town meeting to be held Tuesday, April ninth, 2024 at six o'clock PM, you are required to bring a specific request signed by fifteen or more electors to the township clerk's office no later than Friday, March first. Any group of registered voters may request an advisory question of public policy for consideration by the electors at the annual meeting by giving written, by giving written notice of the specific advisory question to the township clerk in the same manner as required for an agenda item under subsection B of section thirty-dash-ten of the Township Code. Madam Clerk?
We are at proclamations.
Okay, before we actually go into proclamations, I have a recognition. We have a city council, a former city council member that has passed away. And I would like to acknowledge Lester Bergston. Tonight, we send our heartfelt condolences to the family and friends of Councilman Lester D. Bergston, who served twenty years on the Peoria City Council and was known for dedicating his life to this community. He served our country for thirty-seven years in the United States Air Force Reserve with the rank of Lieutenant Colonel. He served for twenty-nine years as the US Air Force Academy's local liaison officer. He worked as an engineer for forty years with Caterpillar, the company that brought him to Peoria after his early upbringing in the farmlands of Concordia, Kansas. And it was in Peoria where he knew he could make a difference, serving the city from nineteen-seventy-three to nineteen-ninety-three. He was the first fifth district council member as local government transitioned from mayor to ten district aldermen to mayor with three at-large and five district council members. The surviving nineteen-seventy-three city council celebrated its fiftieth anniversary last year and remarked its achievements in public projects. Projects like the Civic Center, Fire Training Academy, and Public Works Facility, to name a few. Councilmember Bergston filled his twenty years with work on the Wage Negotiation Committee, City County Recycling Committee, the Pioneer Park Economic Development Committee, and he was known for being accessible and proactive with the public he served. But he was best known as Mr. Public Works for the advocacy of streets, curbs, gutters, and his efforts on street projects like, such as Allen Road and North University Street, and the annexations of Pioneer Park and Willows Court. His advocacy was so renowned that the Public Works Building was renamed the Lester D. Bergston Operation and Maintenance Facility in May of nineteen-ninety-three to coincide with his retirement. Retirement from the council didn't mean he would stop serving the public. He became the city's longest-serving commissioner. Bergston was first appointed to the Solid Waste Landfill Committee in nineteen-seventy-five and served as the Chair of that committee from two thousand and four to two thousand and seventeen. He continued to serve on that committee from twenty-seventeen until his death. When he retired from the council in nineteen-ninety-three, he told the Peoria Journal-Star, "People ask me if I had fun. My response is, I found it very interesting." The community members of Peoria are thankful you found it so interesting, Councilman Bergston. We thank you for your service and for the impact your work will have on our city for generations to come. Thank you. I'd also like to thank Ms. Stacy Peterson for putting together that tribute. Thank you, Stacy. We have two proclamations today. The first celebrates Black History Month. It's presented by the city of Peoria. Whereas the city of Peoria celebrates Black History Month and recognizes that people of African descent have been a part of our community since seventeen-seventy-three, when Jean Baptiste Pointe Desabaux purchased land here, according to historian Romeo B. Garrett. And whereas in recognizing the need to acknowledge and celebrate the achievements of Black Americans, historian Carter G. Woodson developed Negro History Week in nineteen-twenty-six, and this expanded to become Black History Month. And whereas since nineteen-seventy-six, every US president has officially designated the month of February as Black History Month. February was chosen primarily because the second week of the month coincides with the birthdays of both Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass. Lincoln was influential in the emancipation of slaves, and Douglas, a former slave, was a prominent leader in the abolitionist movement which fought to end slavery. And whereas the theme for this year's Black History Month, as chosen by the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, is African-Americans and the Arts. This is especially relevant to Peoria and our rich history of Black artists, including the renowned artist Preston Jackson, who was named a Lincoln Laureate in nineteen-ninety-eight by the Lincoln Academy of Illinois, an organization which celebrates outstanding individuals across a variety of fields. Whereas this month is a time for all Americans to reflect on the rich history and teaching of Black Americans whose contributions to our economic, cultural, political, and social development are vast. And whereas the city of Peoria is proud to honor the history and contributions of Black Americans in our community throughout our state and nation. Now therefore, I, Reid Ali, Mayor of the city of Peoria, Illinois, and on behalf of the Peoria City Council, do hereby recognize February first through March first as Black History Month in Peoria, Illinois. Our final proclamation recognizes National Engineers Week. And we have Ms. Heather Ulrich, President-elect of the Society of Women Engineers, Central Illinois, and Karen Robb, Chair of the Outreach Committee. If you would both come forth, I just seen you earlier this week. Or last week, last Friday, wasn't it? And whereas the Society of Women Engineers, SUI, founded in nineteen-fifty, is a nonprofit educational and service organization that is the driving force that established engineering as a highly desirable career aspiration for women. And whereas SUI empowers women to succeed and advance in their aspirations while receiving recognition and credit for their life-changing contributions and achievements as engineers and leaders in our community. And whereas the Central Illinois section of SUI comprised of two hundred and sixty members has focused on outreach, professional development, advocacy, and work-life integration for the past thirty-two years. And whereas in nineteen-fifty-one, the National Society of Professional Engineers created National Engineers Week to draw attention to the contributions that engineers make on our society. And whereas this year, National Engineers Week will be held February the eighteenth through February twenty-fourth, the Central Illinois section of SUI will partner with the Peoria Riverfront Museum on February eighteenth, 2024, to celebrate National Engineers Week with an open house for students from elementary school through high school with an interest in science and math. Several professional societies will also participate. Now therefore, I, Reid Ali, Mayor of the city of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby recognize the Central Illinois section of the Society of Women Engineer, Engineers for their support and advocacy of National Engineers Week in Peoria, Illinois.
Thank you, Mayor Ali, for that great recognition and proclamation. National Engineering Week is astounding event for engineers across the country, not just here in Peoria, Illinois. But it's not just a week, it's everything we do. Central Illinois' section goes and mentors to over sixteen-hundred children throughout the year through events with Girl Scouts, U of I Extension, our local grade schools across the city, and many other organizations. This week is just one week of many items that we have. And so for that, we thank you for recognizing us and giving us the proclamation to kick off our events this coming Sunday. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
We are at the approval of the minutes.
Member Reganbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the city council meeting held on January twenty-third, 2024, as printed.
Seconded by Councilmember Grayb. Any comments or questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We have one town item. Twenty-four-dash-thirty is a request from the town officials to approve the January twenty-twenty-four actual expenditures and to approve the February twenty-twenty-four anticipated expenditures for the town of the city of Peoria.
Trustee Grayb?
Madam Chair Ali, I move to approve as outlined by our city clerk.
Seconded by Trustee Jackson. Any questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at the consent agenda. Twenty-four-dash-thirty-one is a communication from the city manager and corporation counsel with a request to approve the Labor Day picnic at Riverfront Festival Park on September second, 2024, sponsored by Peoria Area Community Events, Inc., subject to their filing of the necessary permits and approval as required by city code. Twenty-four-dash-thirty-two is a communication with a request to approve a resolution to appoint the Human Resources Benefits Administrator, Rachel Cook, as the authorized agent for the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. And on your desk, there is a handout with a revised resolution and attachments. Twenty-four-dash-thirty-three is a communication with requests for the following. A, to approve a contract with JIMAX Landscape LLC for the demolition of thirty-five-sixty Southwest Adams Street, utilizing Illinois Rebuild Grant Funds in the total amount of eighty thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars. B, approve a contract with JIMAX Landscape LLC for the installation of fencing and a parking pad at thirty-five-sixty Southwest Adams Street, utilizing rebuild grant funds in the total amount of one hundred, one hundred and eighty-one thousand one hundred and eight dollars. And C, approve a contract with GA Rich for electrical and sanitary line work at thirty-five-sixty Southwest Adams Street, utilizing rebuild funds in the amount of one hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. Twenty-four-dash-thirty-four is a communication with a request to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Peoria and Greater Peoria Sanitary District for cleaning and inspection of selected city sewer segments in the lower bid amount of one hundred and fifty thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents, and an additional authorization of fifteen thousand fifty-two dollars and seventy-five cents for contingencies for a total project amount of one hundred and sixty-five thousand five hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-five cents. Twenty-four-dash-thirty-five is a communication with a request to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Peoria and Greater Peoria Sanitary District to line selected city sewer segments in the low bid amount of one hundred and sixty-four thousand two hundred dollars and an additional authorization of sixteen thousand four hundred and twenty dollars for contingencies for a total project amount of one hundred and eighty thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. Twenty-four-dash-thirty-six is a communication from the city manager and corporation counsel with a request to approve a resolution regarding the approval and release of closed session minutes. And twenty-four-dash-thirty-seven is a communication with a request to approve the twenty-twenty-four Utility Assistance Program. And that concludes our consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any items to remove from consent? Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I don't need to pull this, but I just needed abstention recorded on twenty-four-dash-zero-thirty-three due to a perceived conflict of interest due to a current contract relationship.
Okay, thank you. Are there any items to actually, other items to pull? Can I get a motion to approve the other items? Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Do we need to read twenty-four-dash-two-thirty?
Yes.
Twenty-four-dash-thirty-three is a communication from the city manager and director of community development with a request for the following. A, approve a contract with JIMAX Landscape LLC for the demolition of thirty-five-sixty Southwest Adams Street, utilizing Illinois Rebuild Grant Funds in the total amount of eighty thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars. B, approve a contract with JIMAX Landscape LLC for the installation of fencing and a parking pad at thirty-five-sixty Southwest Adams Street, utilizing rebuild grant funds in the total amount of one hundred and eighty-one thousand one hundred and eight dollars. And C, approve a contract with GA Rich for electrical and sanitary line work at thirty-five-sixty Southwest Adams Street, utilizing rebuild funds in the amount of one hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Can I get a motion? Moved by Councilmember Gordon Young for item A. Item A, okay, seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any questions on item A, comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with one abstention, Euler. Councilmember Gordon Young? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, now you can.
I move to approve item number, or item letter B.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with one abstention, Euler. Councilmember Gordon Young?
I move to approve item letter C.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with one abstention, Euler. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We are at regular business. Twenty-four-dash-thirty-eight is a communication from the city manager and chief of police with a request to approve funding for the Illinois Department of Human Services Special Allocation in the amount of three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for the following. A, award youth violence prevention grants to the Boys and Girls Club, Dream Center, and Minority Contractors in the total amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And B, award youth violence prevention microgrants to Products of the Projects, Junior Achievement, Exito Peoria, KOK, Hand Up, Boys to Men, My Mother's Community Garden, Mount Zion Church, and Mothers' War on Violence in the total amount of one hundred and fifty, one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd actually like to ask the police chief to come forward and walk through the recommendations that we have here with regards to the, the, both the violence prevention grants and the microgrants. If you recall, this is money that we have to spend by the end of June, and it's from the Illinois Department of Human Services.
Well, I'm gonna pass the mic on to Jenny Ogizah, who's really done a ton of work behind the scenes and in front of the scenes with this, so Jenny.
So it was super exciting for us. We received eleven applications for regular grants with three grants that were chosen in the total amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we were awarded to the Boys and Girls Club, Dream Center, and Minority Contractors. We would like for you to approve that. And then in the microgrants, we actually had twenty-three applications, and we awarded a hundred and fifteen thousand total to Junior Achievement, Product of the Projects, Exito Peoria, KOK, Hand Up, Boys to Men, My Mother's Community Garden, Mount Zion Church, and Mothers' War on Violence. Mothers' War on Violence was a partial award. Questions? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to applaud you all for the work you did on this. I know that it was a quick turnaround when you were notified that you received the funds from DHS, and so I appreciate the work that you did, Jenny, along with, looks like our Chief Diversity and Inclusion Officer, Chief Green, and city manager, Yurik, and staff from the community development department were part of this scoring process. When I look at the list of those who were awarded the triage that we're about to vote on here in a second, but then specifically when I look at B, and I recognize some of these organizations, and many I don't. And that is a good thing, because I think the council really wanted to ensure that this next round of funding went to what I like to call the unusual suspects. Those who have been doing the work at the grassroots level, often in the shadows, but it doesn't lessen their impact to our community. So again, thank you all for shining light on those who are sometimes the unsung heroes in our community. Those who applied and who didn't get awarded this time. Continue to fight the good fight. I know we have some grant writing workshops coming up led by the police department. Enroll in those, so that way you can have the infrastructure and the capacity to be awarded hopefully in future grant cycles. But again, thank you all so much, and I look forward to supporting this tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon Young?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I echo those sentiments. One of the things that I was really delighted was to, again, see some names that I'm not familiar with. And that's so important. I talked about a few sessions ago, how, you know, we don't want the same organizations or the larger organizations, because there are so many people that are invested in this community that's doing the work. I do have a question in terms of, because that's a long list, twenty-three applicants. Like, that's a beautiful thing. Did they receive any type of feedback in terms of what they can do differently?
Not yet. Okay. So my next steps are to actually call all of those organizations, invite them to come to our next grant writing workshop, which is March fifth and sixth, if they want to attend that. And then with the winners, I'm gonna do a mini workshop with them just so that they have all the paperwork they need.
Oh, that's great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Reganbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And not to sound like a stuck record, but this is really exciting stuff. And as, as we allocated money from the ARPA funds for violence prevention, I think we tried to be very deliberate in how the money was spent. And then to get this additional grant just opened up the gates for this, this avenue. The microgrants, as we've talked in the past, I think, are a really exciting experiment for us, if you will. And I see some familiar faces in there of some of the recipients. So I would, I would just encourage you and the police department to keep, keep in close contact with these, because a lot of these organizations, this is probably their first foray into something like this. So giving them the guidance to walk through the process as the funds are expended, I think, will be critical as well. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. For us, we really are invested in this succeeding, because I love microgrants. I think they're just amazing for really small organizations. So I am going to meet with them and walk them through the whole process, because it is really daunting.
Wonderful. Thanks again. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I don't have much to add. My colleagues have done a very good job. But I would just like to thank you for listening to the council, trying to get into some of those smaller organizations that don't have big administrative help, et cetera. Good for you. And some of those will maybe work a little, but we're gonna find one or two that really does something innovative, creative, and that's wonderful. So thank you very much for all that work. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome, and kudos to the entire team. I love the strategy. I love that you're getting down to the grassroots, the people that are, you know, on the streets, doing the, the tough work, and, you know, not just the big organizations. So this is a great strategy. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And with that, I will entertain a motion moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young, to approve. Any other comments, questions? Please cast your ballots. Passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
I believe we need separate motions on both of those.
We need separate motions. Okay, A, moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. That, we've just voted on A, so now moved by B, seconded for B. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-four-dash-thirty-nine is a communication from the city manager and chief of police with a request for the following. A, approve a sole-source purchase for one Ford Transit wagon from National Auto Fleet in the amount of approximately one hundred thousand dollars, which includes all necessary equipment to be ready for patrol. B is approve a sole-source purchase for one Ford Explorer interceptor for a no-bid procurement source in the amount of approximately ninety thousand dollars, which includes all necessary equipment to be ready for patrol. equipment to be ready for patrol. And C, adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five biennial budget relating to the general fund for use of fund balance for the purchase of vehicles in an amount of one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. We'll need individual votes on all of these and no less than six votes for each one.
Okay, uh, Mister Manager?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm actually gonna turn it back over to the Police Chief, uh, to give you the, the background and the reasons why we're asking for this, uh, agenda item.
Yes, and, and, good evening again. And, and the cost of doing business every once in a while, our, our, our vehicles that are driven twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, uh, oftentimes there are accidents that occur. Uh, we have two vehicles that were totaled in accidents, and, you know, all PD vehicles that require license sirens need to have special options ordered at the time of build to ensure that the uplift of aftermarket equipment works with the base vehicle's electrical systems. This is one of, many of the reasons why police vehicles need to be special ordered and they take longer to obtain, uh, than other department vehicles. This is also one of the reasons why police vehicles cannot be purchased directly off a standard dealership lot. The police passenger van would be obtained from the National Auto Fleet Group. This is a government contract sourcing base sales team. The reason we go this route is we can still order the police-specific options on a vehicle and can work off a general municipal price guarantee contract rather than be tied to a state contract and put on the waitlist, or put, be, be, put last in line. The police interceptor SUV, we are asking for a non-bid procurement approval. The reason we are asking for this is Moore Brothers Ford currently holds the Illinois State Contract for the Ford Explorer Interceptors. Uh, we haven't had an, an order since twenty-two twenty-two that arrived on time, so we're still waiting for police interceptors that were ordered January of twenty-two twenty-three, uh, from them, as is the state and other municipalities. National Auto Fleet Group has not opened slots for the interceptor purchases as of today. We have the option to purchase non-bid. We can make calls to three other Ford dealerships in Illinois that we know have these vehicles on order. The first one of those three dealers that obtains a unit to sell us would get the sale. Basically, we're asking for this to reduce the possibility of being without another police unit for more than a year. That's it.
Can I get a motion? Moved by Councilmember Euler for item A. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any questions, comments? Please cast your ballots for item A. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Moved to approve item B.
Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Moved to approve item C.
Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-four dash forty is a communication from the City Manager and Assistant City Manager with request to adopt an ordinance approving the redevelopment agreement with Eight Twenty-Five Adams LLC for eight oh nine dash eight thirty-five Southwest Adams Street to develop a commercial and residential mixed-use development in the warehouse district.
Mister Manager?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, with us this evening is our Economic Development Manager, Debbie Van Sickle, and I'm gonna turn the floor over to her to let her walk through this redevelopment agreement.
Good evening. So this proposal is for the mixed-use development on Southwest Adams, just, uh, south of Zion Coffee. It's the proposal for approximately thirty thousand square feet of commercial space on the ground floor with uses ranging from restaurant and retail to fitness and recreation. The upper floor will be sixteen, uh, luxury apartments. Um, the development will also include parking for the residential and commercial components of approximately one hundred spots, which exceeds the warehouse district, um, requirements of, would be about forty-eight in the current plan. Um, the total project cost is estimated at nine million eight hundred sixty-six thousand six hundred and twenty-four with approximately nine million six hundred and forty-one and one hundred and twenty-four dollars in TIF-eligible costs. The reimbursement of the TIF increment for the eligible costs over the life of the TIF is approximately two million fifty-nine thousand five hundred and forty-eight. So this would be about sixty-three percent of the, uh, total increment generated over the life of the TIF. The annual reimbursement payments will only commence when the project construction is completed and certificate of occupancy is obtained. Um, during the first five years when the increment is generated, um, the redevelopers eligible for a hundred percent of the increment for those five years, and then year six on, they'll be eligible for fifty percent of the increment. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I don't see any questions, so I'm gonna turn to you, uh, Councilmember Jackson, since this is your district.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, uh, just had a quick comment. I just wanted to, uh, say this is an exciting, sounds like an exciting, uh, project, and I, just a quick question, uh, Mister Manager, do you know what this will bring us at our housing goal for downtown? Um, I know I asked that question a while back.
Well, I think that we're, we're looking here at, at roughly about sixteen additional apartments. I think as we've looked at all of the apartments that have been approved, uh, or that are in construction or under construction in the warehouse district, uh, this will put us over five hundred and twenty-five apartments, so, um, this is, obviously, in the last ten years, we've really made great strides at making the warehouse district a true neighborhood, so.
Sounds good. Well, with that, Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion that, uh, item number twenty-four dash zero four zero be approved as so mentioned.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. That was seconded by Councilmember Euler. Do you also have a question or comment?
Comment.
Comment, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I just wanted to make a couple of comments on this project. First of all, I think we have one of the developers standing in the doorway over here, so thank you for your continued investment in the warehouse district, and I also wanted to take a minute to thank, uh, the manager and the Economic Development Department staff for the thorough work on this. I know that I have, uh, helped push both sides to the limit here to try to get another deal done in the warehouse district, and this is going to allow us to see an entire block be finished over the next couple of years. I had the opportunity to tour the facilities across the street from this that the same developers are doing, and it's very impressive to see what's been accomplished inside and all of the investment that we're going to be able to take advantage of in the next couple of years, so thank you to everybody for the diligent, hard work on this and look forward to seeing how this project materializes. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Reganbuck?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is another exciting example of, of what's happening in Peoria, and I hope everybody, um, can wrap their arms around the, the energy that's building in the warehouse district. I do have one question, though, um, for Director Sickle. If you could just wrap, help us wrap our arms around the, the percentage on the increment being a hundred percent for the first five years, since that's a little bit out of the norm.
It is out of norm. Um, we really tried to front-end some of it because of a lot of the demo costs that they have. If you'd been by there before they started, um, the project, there was a lot of, um, pieces falling down, so they had to start that just to make it a safe, safe place. So we did front-end a little bit heavier to, for them to recoup some of the develop, the demo costs, and then scaled it down to, um, move through the rest of the term.
I think those of us who have had pizza at the place across the street from this have looked at that building longingly, wondered what the potential could be, so we're excited to see that potential become a reality, so thank you to the developer team, and I will be supporting this as well. Thank you.
You're welcome. It's gonna be a great project. Uh, Councilmember Allen?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a question of inquiry, um, because we have been, uh, approving some exciting developments in the warehouse district using the economic tool that is a TIF. Um, is there a certain amount of, I guess, quota or allowance? Like, will we get to a point where there won't be any more eligible developments, um, eligible for the TIF within that district? Are we, because it seems like we're approving a lot in that area, so are we getting to a certain threshold? I know that's kind of a novice question, but just kind of wanted to kind of learn the parameters. Are we, are we at a, a TIF limit, per se?
I, I really don't think that, that, um, we're gonna hit necessarily a limit. I think that there's enough, um, buildings still in the warehouse district, um, that are eligible for redevelopment work, or there's vacant lots that could be developed, that I don't think that there's, that really I think we would ever hit that limit necessarily, and I think, uh, it's been a great success.
To know when there's still room to get occupancy, and when that slows down, they'll know it, and then they're less likely to continue at that point.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Graham?
I think it's exciting because of the spin-off impact that this development will have on, on our entire downtown, including the warehouse district. Whenever you have folks living in a neighborhood, they're going to be investing in that neighborhood, and in this country, we have, um, the invisible hand of Adam Smith that helps to allocate resources and investments, how people can make money, and this is where I think government needs to step back and let the free enterprise system work. And so, maybe grocery store downtown warehouse district, maybe, um, a pharmacy, um, it's endless, but we all know that within a couple, three years, we're gonna have sixty-six hundred people living downtown, including those, um, in congregant settings. This is exciting. Going back many years, the downtown was primarily a retail center, and after the shops closed, everybody disappeared. It was, it was moving, though, when the shops were, were open, but, uh, back in those days, we didn't have a Sheridan Village, we didn't have a Northwoods Mall, we didn't have the shops on the Grand Prairie. But now we have our downtown that is a commercial, office, legal, and now neighborhood unto itself, and it's developing in that direction. Years ago, people would say, you know, you could shoot a cannon downtown and hit nobody. Well, we're turning that around there, and actions, uh, of the sort that we're taking tonight are paving the way to a better and brighter future for all of us, and, um, I hope we continue with this, um, energy. Thank you.
Very well said. Thank you. Councilmember Kelly?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Mister Manager, I, I wanna make sure I get this right, but, uh, uh, Councilmember Allen spoke about running out of, of increment, and if I'm not mistaken, in the warehouse district, each project, each TIF increment is, is, uh, development, or that item, i- that building gets its own increment, okay? It isn't spread around. So, the, now, there are TIFs that, that operate on that general basis, okay? But in, in the warehouse district, if I'm not mistaken, uh, it's project-specific that that increment goes to, so it's, you could say it's unlimited if we wanna build three-hundred-story buildings, but, um, that increment is always gonna flow from that, that development and that development alone. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you to the developer for bringing this project. Thank you for the economic development team for working with the developer to bring this to fruition. It's, it's very exciting for Peoria. Uh, we have a motion on the floor and a second, so if there's no other questions, comments, Passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at unfinished business, and we do not have anything, okay? Um, so the next item should be new business. It is out of order on this agenda and actually should be next.
Thank you. Uh, new business, Councilmember Graham?
Today was a historic day in the history of Peoria. Uh, today, we had the official blessing of the new cancer center in the third district, serves the entire city, serves the entire region. People will be coming from all over the country because of the proton beam machine that will enhance cure rates for cancer. Today will go down in history as an important day in the continued development of this city as a world-class healing and medical center and research center. Um, I know Councilman Reganbuck's working hard to get some tours set up for those of us who couldn't make it for the blessing of this facility today. About a quarter of a billion dollars' worth of investment, uh, along, just right off our Knoxville Corridor, but, um, today we just have to be very thankful for what's been happening in our community. We're moving again, Mayor, in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you for, uh, making that acknowledgement, uh, Councilman Graham. I was able to take a, a sneak peek about a week ago, and it's just an amazing, huge facility, and that proton beam piece of equipment, I, was tons and tons and tons. It's just, you know, it just stays with you, and, you know, what it's going to do to save lives and preserve lives throughout the region, and people will come throughout the region here and perhaps throughout the country, so, yes, it's, it's outstanding. Thank you. Councilmember, uh, Vespa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, well, for the benefit of our listeners at home, we have a packed gallery tonight, um, seeking to address the Gaza conflict. Um, I've heard from many of, of my constituents, um, who have good faith concerns, and I appreciate the civic engagement. That said, I wanna make one thing clear: Hate does not play in Peoria. I hope we can all firmly reject any effort to denigrate any human lives, from the Israeli hostages being held captive in underground tunnels to the displaced Palestinians who are living in tents in Rafa. All people of good conscience should be praying for all of these poor souls who must be terrified. All need to make it out safely. Their hopes and dreams mean no less than yours or mine. When we fail to recognize the humanity in each other, we lose the humanity in ourselves. Thank you.
I also have a statement that's pertaining to this matter, but I'm not gonna read it tonight, uh, at the council meeting, but I will release the statement, uh, following the council meeting, and it will be published on PRA-GOV dot org, uh, the homepage, uh, city's homepage under new, under, uh, the news section, and also released to the media. At this point, Madam Clerk?
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the city council.
We have quite a few speakers tonight. I'm counting twenty-nine cards, so we are going to start, uh, with Osama Al-Rafai. I, I, as, uh, Mister Al-Rafai comes to the podium, I just want to make everybody aware of our format for public comment. Um, you can speak up to five minutes, and then after all the public comment is over, our format is that we don't respond to the public comment. That's just our standard procedure, and I just want everybody to be aware of that.
Thank you very much. I was looking at it, and I saw that it was four minutes and thirty seconds. I said, I already lost thirty seconds, I did not start talking, but it's right now, back to five minutes. Thank you very much. So, um, yes, it is Black History Month, and the genocide the indigenous people and the African-Americans have faced should never be forgotten. For me, every month is a Black History Month. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Malcolm X, and all great leaders of the African-American community, their contributions are much appreciated, and we are indebted to all those who struggled in the path of liberty and freedom. I appreciate and applaud you, Madam Mayor, for celebrating the Black History Month. I appreciate and applaud you, Madam Mayor, for celebrating the Black History Month. Madam Mayor, Honorable City Councilmen, today we are experiencing another form of genocide in Gaza. As an example, my friend, who's a humanitarian aid worker, lost his beloved wife. Four of his beloved kids, actually all of them. He had only four kids. His wife's brother, and his wife, and his wife's sister and her husband, their kids. Two of his wife's uncles, their wives and their kids. The number I could count at that moment was about 30. Yes, we are far away from them, and might think that their affair does not impact us here in Peoria. Well, I believe it does. I am here calling for a ceasefire, to issue a resolution by the city of Peoria to call for a ceasefire. It is a message that we need to send to our elected federal officials, who are distancing themselves from the public, the public who are calling for a ceasefire. The city of Peoria in my heart. It is my town, and it is as big as Chicago. Chicago has followed pursuit. We need to follow pursuit of Chicago. Chicago is calling for a ceasefire. So I am calling for the Madam Mayor and the Honorable City Council over here to issue a resolution calling for a ceasefire. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Our next speaker is Imam Mazhar Mahmood.
Salaam alaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Greetings of peace, esteemed members of the city council. Tonight, I come before you with a heavy heart compelled to address the dire situation unfolding in Gaza. The gravity of this matter demands our attention and action. The occupation known as Israel expressed remorse when they shot three Israeli hostages in Gaza. They called it friendly fire when these three Israeli civilians were raising white flags. They were shot at and killed brutally. But you know what the catch is, honorable members? Hundreds and thousands of Palestinian children, women, and men are butchered by this occupation in their alleged war, which is nothing but genocide, and this is done without remorse. Some honorable members here today, and at a personal level, they've expressed that they don't want to be divisive in their approach in calling for a ceasefire, as they represent all residents of Peoria. And this is a foreign affair. However, this in reality is irrational as well. It's as equivalent as saying that we will not condemn the murder of the late George Floyd because there are people who actually till today support the corrupt officers who committed these atrocities. Let's go even further back and say that by this standard, people won't condemn the slave trade and the genocide that was done against the native indigenous people and the African-American people who are heroes of this land. By this standard of divisiveness or divisiveness, the International Court of Justice and their positions would be divisive as well, with 16 to 1 voting against the crimes of Israel. And that one judge who also voted in favor of Israel also being condemned by her country. I also ask you, if you did not want to be divisive, my honorable members here, our leaders, then why did you light up the Macluggage Bridge in Peoria, blue and white, in solidarity with people who are now the killers and butchers? Why didn't you even think for a moment about those who have been massacred in Gaza? This senseless genocide has everything to do with Peoria. It is not a foreign affair, rather a local and a global affair because it is our tax dollars funding the illegal apartheid and the occupation in their genocide. Over 30,000 people have been massacred since October 7th, with millions displaced without food, water, and medical necessities that they need to live. Masajid, i.e. mosques, churches indiscriminately bombed, universities, hospitals gone to the ground. The occupation known as Israel told people from the north to flee to the south, and then from the south to further south. While now they are in Rafah, even further south, they've been bombed and killed at every juncture, at every juncture. The plan has been known, my friends, since the establishment of this apartheid state, that they are there for one purpose and one purpose only. And it is an evident fact through the maps, and this is none other than the annexing of more land, something that nobody here, my friends, would accept for their own people, for Americans, for your family, and for your community. You would not want to lose your home and have people kicked out, making you leave your home. Many have stated, my friends, while there are still hostages kidnapped in Gaza. The Almighty tells us in the Quran, and I am a man of faith. Allah says, "I'dilu huwa akrabu littaqwa," meaning, "When you speak, be just." Yes, just as there is hostages in Gaza, there are 10,000-plus hostages in Israeli prisons in the form of women and children who are being tried within military courts. And some are not even tried and left to rot in prison. Freedom is not subjective. Freedom should be encompassing one and all, and it should be generally objective. This is not a Muslim thing. This is a human thing. That is why you see the diversity present here and the pluralistic diversity and background in the many millions who are marching on this earth, calling for justice. Just glance at your hearts, my honorable leaders, which are sitting here today. Glance at your hearts and your humanity and make the call that the tens of city councils have made, calling for a ceasefire. I conclude with a statement of the Prophet Muhammad, peace and blessings be upon him. All of you are shepherds and will most definitely be accountable for your flock. Ceasefire now. Free Palestine. Free Palestine.
Our next speaker is Rami Abdur-Rabu. Rami?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rami Abdur-Rabu. I stand in front of you today, not just as a physician, but as a witness of war crimes in Gaza. In 2014 war, I was part of a medical mission to Gaza, where I saw with my own eyes the devastating impact of a conflict on innocent lives. The scenes I witnessed were beyond any horror. One could imagine hundreds of dead or dying children, mothers, and elderly, victims of indiscriminate bombing and the use of internationally prohibited weapons by the Israeli army. It was without exaggerating hell on earth. In my role as a physician, I was confronted with scenes that challenged all my professional training and my expectations. I witnessed individuals badly wounded, their bodies torn into half, and still crying out for help in the emergency department. The reality was grim. We didn't even have basic painkillers to offer them a relief in their final moments. Our only resources was to lay them on the floor, praying they will die in peace. And this showing clearly how we didn't have enough supplies, tools, or medicine to deal with the crisis we faced. Every face I saw belonging to a civilian, children with their future stolen, mothers whose lives were altered, and elderly individuals who had survived much only to be shattered in an instant. The magnitude of a human suffering was overwhelming. A relentless reminder of the devastating impact of the world's silence. Today, I urge you to compare the tragedy of 2014 war with the ongoing catastrophe. Back then, approximately 2,100 people lost their lives. Now the death toll has taken to more than 28,000 innocent lives. This staggering numbers is not just a statistics. It represents individual lives, families torn apart, and communities destroyed. As someone who served on the front line, and with my wife, who's originally a Palestinian, and now dedicating at this current moment, while I'm talking to you, she's dedicating her time as a pediatrician to help children in this very city, Peoria. I implore you to reflect on the universality of childhood. Children across the world, whether in Gaza, Peoria, or anywhere else, share the same right to safety, to laughter, and to a future. Yes, yet as we speak right now, the fundamental right is being denied to the children of Gaza. We are at a critical juncture where our collective voice can be, can make a difference. It's our moral obligation to call for a ceasefire, to stand up against the ongoing violence that threatens to escalate into a genocide in Rafah. This is not a matter of politics, anyone. It's a question for humanity, of humanity, of recognizing the value of every human life regarding their race, ethnicity, or religion. The situation demands our immediate attention and action. We must remain, we must not remain silent. We must shout out for a ceasefire, for the sake of all children, for the sake of our shared humanity. The cost of inaction is great, and the time to act is now. Ceasefire now and free Palestine.
Next, we have Youssef Borgin. After Youssef is going to be Estrella Diaz.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. First, we want to thank you for us to be able to come speak with you guys and tell us, tell you guys exactly how we truly feel. And thank you, Madam Mayor, for taking the time to listen. And Chief of the Police, Peoria Police, thank you for your presence as well. I want to reiterate what Mike Vespa stated: Hate has no place in Peoria. I 100% agree, because hate has no place in this world whatsoever. And as he said, we should be praying for all poor souls, and that they make it all out safely in Palestine. When we come here and when all the different cities in the United States and many different countries ask for a ceasefire, they're not simply saying, "Support only Palestine," in that we wish any sort of hate on Israel whatsoever. When we ask for a ceasefire, when we demand a ceasefire, we want unity and we want safety for everybody. We have seen more than 20, if not 30,000 people, innocent, may I remind you, individuals being killed in Palestine. 30-plus thousand people, majority of them being kids and women. Imagine if that was your children out there, being bombed indiscriminately, simply trying to survive, simply trying to find food, simply trying to live another day. Majority of these kids right now, they can't even get the basic support they need. They can't even get the basic food or water that they need. And as you probably all of you know, water towers have been destroyed, hospitals have been destroyed, ambulances and nonstop, nonstop places that are extremely important for human life have been destroyed in Palestine. Are we really going to believe that this is all in regards to trying to get the real target? In the United States, when there's a mass shooting at a school, and we want to get to that shooter, do we blow up the whole school? No. Use smart tactics to go room by room to try to find exactly who that perpetrator is, who that terrorist is, and take that individual out. When we hear of Israel saying that, oh, there might have been some undercover or some Hamas or something like that inside of hospitals, so they blow the whole thing up? Does that make sense, ladies and gentlemen? That makes zero, zero sense. On top of that, it's been very clear that it's a war crime, 120%. Yet no one speaks up for them when it comes to major countries, including the United States of America. The Illinois statute states terrorism is a, the definition of terrorism, a person commits offensive terrorism when with the intent to intimidate or coerce a significant portion of civilian population. What do you think that means, ladies and gentlemen? When we see constant taking over of lands of innocent souls, nonstop taking over their land, just like the United States of America did to the Native Americans, we could maybe say that we didn't, we couldn't do anything about that today, back then. But today, when we see it going on, we can actually say something. We can actually do something. When we come to the city council to speak with each one of you guys, which I must remind you, you were elected to be in that position, we asked you simply to stand up for people that matter, not just in Peoria, but in all across the world. I want to reiterate, when I ask, when we say that we want a ceasefire, we're not saying, just like the leaked email, that, oh, we're going to divide the city of Peoria. We're not dividing the city of Peoria. When we speak up for atrocities and for terrorism, saying that terrorism is wrong, we must say it on all platforms. We can't just pick sides. Each one of you, sitting in those chairs today, man and woman, and Madam Mayor, when we simply say we want you to call for a ceasefire, we just want you guys to represent us as humanity. Not Muslims in particular, not Christians in particular, not Jewish people in particular, but humanity as a total, because innocent lives does not discriminate. On top of that, one more thing I want to add, which many people, including people in this audience today, want to think that it's a religious issue. Killing innocent souls is not a religious issue. So I don't want you guys to sit here and think that we're siding with one religion or one country or anything like that. We're siding with what is right. Thank you.
Next is Estrella Diaz, followed by Justin Luba.
Hello. Give me one second. All right. All right. As everyone here before me has stated, all we're asking you is to support the ceasefire resolution. You may say it isn't within our power to pass this, or that it isn't a local issue, and I understand why you may think that. I do understand that this won't affect things on a global scale, because we are a small voice, or rather, a small piece in this grand puzzle of a country, but we still are a piece that completes the puzzle. As for local issue, well, it is a local issue, because we have residents in Peoria that are Palestinian, who have family, who have friends, who have people that they know, along with people that are no longer around due to the indiscriminate killings and bombings because of the Israeli government. All of you sit there in positions of power, saying you speak for the people. But how can that be true when you decide to turn a blind eye simply because you say it won't affect things on a global scale, or it's not within your power to do so? Again, we may be small, but that doesn't mean that we don't matter, because we do. We're not telling you or asking you to take sides. We're asking you to represent the people, to say that we don't stand for this, we don't stand for this violence, and we don't want to contribute to it, and we want an end to the violence that's happening. We, the people, can watch as you are our elected officials right now, but if you are not to listen to us, we, the people, have the power to vote you out. Even if it may not affect you on a personal level, it's important for us to care as humans. Someone I once know said, "We shouldn't have to wait for something to come knocking at our door to take action." "We shouldn't have to wait for something to come knocking at our door to take action. So what are we waiting for?" Thank you.
Next, we have Justin Luba, followed by Adam Kattum.
My name is Justin, and I was raised in Peoria, where I now live and vote, and I'm urging you to adopt a ceasefire resolution. I wake up every day and re-realize that it could have been me, murdered on October 7th, or even taken captive. It could also have been me, torn apart by 2,000-pound bombs made in the United States and provided to the state of Israel. I understand that all of us are here right now, not slowly dying, with lungs full of dust and rubble only by accidents of birth and circumstance. All life is sacred, and cycles of destruction do not end with further killing. The equal and irreducible value of all human life demands that we, at minimum, bear honest witness. There is nothing human in us that can look away from Gaza. There is no way to say nothing in the face of this and still walk away with one's own humanity intact. Yet so often, it is easiest to silence what is human in us, killing it for the sake of political expediency. Israel's current retaliatory assault on Gaza has included the decimation of all life-sustaining infrastructure and the blockading of essential aid. Sewage runs in the streets, and Israel has salted the fields. This demolition includes the raising of most of Gaza's domiciles, churches, mosques, schools, the besieging of hospitals, and UN shelters, the use of illegal chemical weapons, extrajudicial field executions, torture of civilians, weaponized starvation, and a further endless list of war crimes made possible by contributions from US taxpayers. Continuing to refer to these acts as defense is dishonest propaganda. However, I am not here to talk about the distortions in popular rhetoric that try to make us believe that investing in cycles of violence will ever bring peace. I'm not here to discuss the view that one people's grief could ever justify another's oppression and annihilation, and I am also not here to read out a list of heart-numbing statistics or to provide historical context. I only want you to imagine a child, preferably one who you are close with, your own, or a niece, or a nephew, or a grandchild, or a loved one's child. Imagine them playing by the beach with a kite or a shovel, calling your name and smiling. Imagine them being contemplative, perhaps outside or in their houses of worship. Imagine them loving their grandparents, speaking intensely with their friends, playing a game, drawing, being momentarily obsessed with something, deciding who to become and devising a sense of themselves. Imagine watching this child's body imploding in bullets. Imagine that the last image you have of your child is their look of panic as your roof collapses from the force of an airstrike. Imagine them hunched and walking without food or water, the 20-plus miles from the north to the south of Gaza, only to die painfully of digestive illness in a refugee camp. These are the least graphic descriptions. Nothing could justify this horror that our tax dollars have created. All of the children of Palestine are your child. Our government murders hundreds of your children every day with your taxes. They murder these children or leave them alone after murdering their family. At this moment, the Israeli assault on Gaza is an orphan factory, and it runs on US military aid. If you cannot or will not put your own children in the place of Gaza, in the place of the children of Gaza, then you are the successful product of a racist dehumanization campaign. It should not be controversial to refuse ideologies that demand endless mass death and tribute. It could never be wrong to protest the unceasing parade of mutilated Palestinian corpses that we, Peorian taxpayers, bankroll. And it is not anti-anyone to advocate for universal safety, collective liberation, and well-being. Someone who attempts to tell you otherwise is either a coward, deeply misguided, or employed by the weapons industry. United States taxpayers unwillingly donate $3.8 billion yearly to the state of Israel, in addition to billions more we will provide in 2024. Over $1.7 million of Peorian taxpayer money flows into this death machine yearly. In other words, we are the direct enablers of a plausible genocide, and with each dollar sent, we make ourselves more complicit. This is why we have to say no, not in my name, and not with my money. We are each called politically, morally, and spiritually. There is no neutral position. If you are not saying no to genocide, then you are saying yes. Refusing to call for a ceasefire in every capacity available to you amounts to an abdication of moral courage, a turning away from all that is human in you, and a complete rejection of equality, justice, and anything one could call God. Every day, the death toll grows, more children are orphaned or slaughtered, and we are responsible. Whatever power you have, use it. Ceasefire now.
Next, we have Adam Kattum, followed by Anwar Hajj.
City Council, Madam Mayor, I'm going to speak with you guys from the heart. I know many of you, many of you know me, you know what I stand for, so there's no need for me to having to repeat myself over and over. Since it's Black History Month, let me remind you guys of a little history story that happened in 1963, Birmingham, Alabama. When the children, the black children, were sick of being segregated in Birmingham, Alabama, they got up and they protested on the street. Over 800, 4,000 black children, under 15 years old, under 8 years old, under 4 years old, got arrested and got put in prison. Now, when you see people my age coming out and speaking for what is right and what is wrong, then that just shows that something is going on, something is wrong, and that we need to stand up and we need to do something. Because I might not be old enough to vote, I might not be old enough to have a say what happens in the world, but I definitely have the right to feel safe in my city, knowing that my elected officials aren't against what I'm doing, aren't against what I stand for, aren't against my beliefs. Because knowing that you guys can give us the opportunity of having a ceasefire in Peoria, that doesn't mean that we're discriminating, that we're picking sides, that we're doing anything. That just means that people, whether whatever side you're on, can feel safe, can feel safe in our own city, knowing that our own elected officials believe that the death toll, the killing, everything that has been happening has to come to an end. Because it is over 30,000 people that have died in Gaza. Many of them, I know, many of them, I've tried to help. It's impossible. It's not easy. That's why we ask our City Council members, we ask you, Madam Mayor, to come and propose a ceasefire on the agenda. At least put the ceasefire on the agenda, have a vote. Let us know what our elected officials think about what is going on in a war that is in the Middle East. It's a big ask. No one's saying that whether you vote yes, or whether you vote no, that nothing, nothing's going to happen. It's a big ask. And I ask you, from the bottom of my heart, hoping to reach the bottom of your hearts, that's being blocked by politics, that's being blocked by votes, that's being blocked by funds for next election, hoping that my ask, and the rest of the people here's ask, can just put the ceasefire on the agenda. Whether you guys vote yes, whether you guys vote no, just knowing what our City Council members think, knowing which one of our council members think that us being safe, us feeling safe, is a good thing. Because that's all we're here for. We just want it on the agenda. We just want to know your point of views on everything. You vote no, you vote yes, that's all up to you. Ceasefire now. Thank you.
Next, we have Anwar Hajj, followed by Mahmoud Mizied.
Good evening, esteemed members of the Peoria Council. For the record, my name is Anwar Hajj. I'm here today, along with several Americans who consider Peoria as their home, to request a three-point resolution be passed by the City Council mandating the state of Israel to point one, enforce a permanent cessation of all bombing and military operations that have to date killed over 30,000 innocent civilians since October 7th, of which at least 8,000 were children, while also leaving 17,000 children orphaned with no living parents. Allow for the safe passage and distribution of humanitarian aid to 2.2 million starved and dehydrated civilians within the Gaza Strip, who are, as we speak, living on less than one meal per day, with reports showing several civilians eating grass and drinking seawater. Point three, allow for UN investigative officials to conduct investigations into the intent behind Israel's self-proclaimed defensive operation that has now effectively killed over 30 of the remaining Israeli hostages due to their indiscriminate bombing campaign. The people of Peoria can no longer stand by while the major powers within our government continue to use our tax dollars to finance this genocide happening to our brothers and sisters in Gaza. Let me be clear, by no means do I believe that if this resolution passed, Israel would stop their indiscriminate bombing of innocent civilians. There is an extreme power imbalance between the US and Israel where we are, for the first time, seeing play out in the global stage. The state of Israel, or should I say Bibi Netanyahu and his far-right coalition within the Knesset do not care about what the American people think of the genocide unfolding, but at the same time, they're completely content with the billions of tax dollars of those same American people being sent to Israel every year. This resolution means more symbolically than it does in application. This resolution will ensure, once the history books are written, the councilmen and women and residents of Peoria are illustrated on the right side of justice and not on the side of apartheid and occupation. Thanks to the advent of social media and the age of information, we are seeing in real time how the acts of the Israeli occupation forces are going unchecked, giving these bad-faith actors a platform to display their complete and utter disregard for human life, let alone humanitarian law. To those opposed to this three-point proposal, I ask why? What precedent are we setting on the global stage by not doing the bare minimum and putting a stop to this genocide? How will we tell Russia that it cannot do as it pleases to Ukraine? How will, how will we tell China that it cannot invade Taiwan? My last parting question that I urge the members of the council to reflect on, do you truly believe Netanyahu, in an effort to save his political career, wouldn't drag our loved ones into a larger regional war? If your answer is no, then the passing of this resolution is where we start to ensure our loved ones are safe within the US and abroad. Thank you.
Next, we have Mahmoud Mizied, followed by Sheldon Katz.
Madam Mayor, councilman, thank you. Thank you for having us here to speak out. I'm going to speak out a little different than what those people speak out here. In the name of Allah, the Most Merciful, the Most Gracious. The Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him, he is the last man for all mankind. He brought the peace and justice for everybody, whether black, white, Hindu, or Arab, everybody, for all mankind. Now, what he said is, "There is a time will come that the one who speaks the truth, he will be called liar, and the one who told the lies, he will be called truthful." And this is the time that we are in now. And this is the time that it's called the time of lying. Everything, what, I would say 90% is lying what you hear about in the news, in the media. I'm sorry to say that, but that's the truth. I've been here for over 50 years. I'm 70 years old. I was born in Palestine, 1953. I was under occupation, or under the Jordanian government. And then comes up 1967, under the Israeli government, and still now under occupation. I have land, I have house, I have family, all of them, they live there. And we're still under occupation, and our life is just go and come, go and come, just like you're in jail, big jail, for us. Now, to give you also a history, that Israel was established in 1948. Prior to that, the Middle East was occupied through Britain, and Britain, the one who brought those Zionist to Palestine to terrorize people, take their land, kill people, and it's all proven, or it's all documented, the massacres they did, there Yassin, the massacres they did also in Sabra, Shatila, in Lebanon, all of these massacres, all those names, prominent names, what's his name, Herzl, also Moshe Dayan, Sharon, the one who did Sabra and Shatila, you know, massacre. And in the front of all the world are watching that. Where is justice? Where is justice? We need justice for everybody, no matter where they at. Now, nowadays, what we see in Gaza is the destruction for the, everything, destruction for human lives, stones, trees, everything that you can imagine. You can see, you have to watch the news and you have to look for the truth, as I said. They killed the pediatricians, more than 135, if I'm correct. They killed the media people that they broadcast or tell the truth, they killed them. One of the, one of the names also, probably you heard Akli, her name Akli, previously in the West Bank, she was shot and killed. And also, there are so many, so many of them, they get killed because they are telling the truth. And for, you know, 75 years, we're still under occupation, and what more can I, I cannot tell you all of that in 75 years. All we here come here, you know, you are, the people, they are denying drink, food, water for everybody, you know, and they're not letting anything to go through the people of Gaza. Or we're asking you, the councilmen, to vote for that with your conscience, you know, to end up this war or to stop, have a ceasefire. And maybe you say yes, maybe you say no, but it all goes back to the administration or the president and the House and the Senate, and those are the people to decide that, you know. We can say, we can express our feelings, but it all that is in come to them, they can stop, say, "Israel, stop, 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 stop." Killing the people, that's it, and they can do that. Thank you.
Next, we have Sheldon Katz, followed by Sunny Garcia.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you this evening. So a local group has asked you to consider a resolution for a ceasefire between Israel and Hamas in Gaza. Okay, I don't believe this council has jurisdiction or city business pertaining to the conflict. I'm here to speak about the real purpose of this proposed resolution, its potential impact on the greater Peoria Jewish community, which I am a part of. I hope this council will not further fan the flames of the controversy locally by even considering the proposal. Initiatives like this fit into a global effort to restrain Israel and prevent it from defending itself and its citizens from the stated objective of Hamas, in fact, you even heard it this evening, to eliminate Israel and the occupation of what is now Israel by all the Jews. Get rid of them. Wrapping the proposal in humanitarian terms is effective since we all feel for the residents of Gaza, apparently more than their leaders do. The efforts of the Israeli army to facilitate humanitarian aid to the displaced residents of Gaza are hampered by Hamas, and there will be no real relief to the residents until Hamas is gone. A ceasefire will only cost more lives on both sides after Hamas would use it to re-harm and reorganize. Hamas is not giving up their objective. Hamas is not giving up their objective of their organization or their supporters to eliminate Israel forever and all the people therein. Those are the horrible realities that we cannot change from here. Apparently, even putting this resolution on your docket is enough support to fan those flames. And what is this ceasefire that's being asked for? An end to the occupation that is Israel. However, what actually brought me here tonight is the bigger picture. There have been relentless efforts worldwide, on our college campuses, and even now in our high schools and city councils, to delegitimize Israel, erode its status as a nation. This has, of course, also made antisemitism more acceptable in social media, college campuses, and even here in Peoria, we've experienced the effects. It's not good for the Muslim community either, I should add. I am here this evening because my father is ninety-six years old and cannot travel anymore. He is an expert in the process of delegitimizing and dehumanizing other people so that they can be persecuted. He was born in Germany, and he saw and experienced himself the process of gradual erosion of people's humanity. My conversations with him lately focus on his warnings that this is happening again. A few blocks from here is the Holocaust Memorial that demonstrates the magnitude of the consequences of not recognizing hate and its disguises. Now, well-meaning people are often caught up in the process, throwing around words like genocide and apartheid without fully understanding the implications. Real liberation of the Palestinian people requires them to choose different leaders and requires them to choose goals that do not require another Holocaust. Israel is pursuing this now, for their own security and hopefully for a better chance for their neighbors to live in peace. But a ceasefire only slows them down and puts many more lives at risk. One last thing. Imagine this city council considering a resolution for a ceasefire, or any city council, in 1943 between the U.S. and Japan or Germany, without them surrendering. Thank you.
Next, we have Sunny Garcia, followed by Tyrone Campbell.
Good evening. My name is Sunny Garcia. I work for the Muslim Civic Coalition as a civic justice organizer. As we speak right now, as we postpone a vote on a resolution, all eyes are on Rafa. The following is a post from a physician who's on a mission in Gaza currently. These are his words. As I am writing you, noise of drones and fighter jets is getting louder and louder. It's the loudest since I've entered Gaza two days ago. I was lucky to get the weaker internet connection today, so thought to write it down. Danger of massive massacre is imminent now, requesting lots of prayers. We had a hectic day today, and it was unsettling to work under the noise of drones hovering above us. Now the darkness of the night, when there is no electricity, food, and water, we hear that the occupation will launch another attack at any moment. There are displaced refugees, including many physicians who are working at the hospital and returning to their makeshift tents without the guarantee of seeing another sunrise. I met a physician today who was actually the head of the Health Ministry of Gaza, but he is now living in a tent on the streets of Rafa after being displaced. He lost all his savings in a split second when Israel bombed his house, and he is now struggling just to survive. His youngest son, only ten years old, only wishes to eat an egg, which he has not been able to do in four months. What we take for granted in the comfort of our homes is a wish, a dream for these people. This story is not an anomaly. This story is nearly, is of nearly two million people that are trying to survive four months of bombing and ground invasion while we sit here and wait and postpone a ceasefire resolution. If that doesn't speak to your heart, maybe the dollars incentive it will. Today, Illinois invests $152 million as their portion for bombs, to bomb innocent women and children. That money could be better served for households, for housing for people around the year. Could it be better served for educational system? Could be better served for youth at-risk programs here in the city of Peoria? Could be better served for a million different reasons. But no, we want to stay here in silence and allow the genocide, and yes, it is the genocide. I know it firsthand. My people suffered the same, the same outcome on these lands hundreds of years ago, and people looked the other way. I've worked with the immigrant rights organizations, I've worked with undocumented people, I've worked with Black Lives Matter, and today I'm working with Muslims. And my fight will always be for justice and for liberty for everyone, including Muslims, including Jews. I've been working with the Muslim Civic Coalition for a couple of months. I've been working for a free Palestine for years, and never once have I heard one of my Muslim brothers and sisters say an antisemitic term. Never once have I heard them call for the massacre of Jewish people because of their faith. But since October 7th, I've heard over and over and over again, my Jewish brothers and sisters call for the complete annihilation of my Palestinian brothers and sisters. So I call on you, Mayor Ali, my Muslim sister, and the rest of the city council to stop being neutral and support a ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Next, we have Tyrone Campbell, followed by Leith Katum.
Rita, council, y'all, I would like to talk to them. You know, my name is Tyrone Campbell. I came to Peoria in like 1989, hanging in Harrison and Warner, and I was a young man that was like, like well-groomed together with friends and family. I was raised like that. So I asked somebody today, I said, why are our people divided? But during that course of time, I had went on like a disciplinary vacation and got a hold of this. So I've been reading this since I've been like in the fields, because I'm like in the matrix, like on the outside looking in at the people, like, why is Israel and Gaza and Palestine, why we all divided, when I'm looking at the Abraham Accord? So then God just told me, said, no, to me, everything is laid naked and open to the eyes of Him, who we got to give an account to. So he said, people need to start having integrity when dealing with these issues they putting out there about, we hate Israel, hate Palestine. I don't believe that, because both of Abraham's sons, they was united, and I don't see no division in there at all. But my thing is, I'm like, the problem is not people, it's love. We need love to come back to the people, but how does that happen? It's got to start with the church first, the church people. I only get mad at the politicians. For the people, it's the people that's playing church. So I don't try to judge them, they have judged me because I ain't going along with the process, but I've learned it's okay to walk in love and just minister, minister the word of God and show love, but yet everybody's not entitled to love, because people are living in like fraud attitude, no fraud making, it's like pretending to love you, but they really don't. So that's why there's division and chaos coming in. You just need to read this and continue to let Him guide you, and that's when unification begin. It's fire with us. They are just people in power. I don't disrespect them, but I believe when Jesus, He died, He split the temple into religion, spiritual. We spiritual. I don't believe in religion, I believe in relationship. And it's got to start somewhere, and that's us first. That's why I'm going to tell y'all, don't be mad, because I be like, I ain't even mad at the Palestinians, we family. How am I divided against myself? Amen, y'all.
Next, we have Leith Katum, followed by Jamaludin Amanullah.
Esteemed members of the Peoria City Council, I come here not only as a Palestinian, but also as an American concerned with the future of this country. Over the past few months, it has become obvious to me that despite the concerning breaches of both the Geneva Convention and international law, we continue to blindly support a country that has repeatedly lied to this country and disrespected us as a whole. From the very beginning, Israel has made their intention clear. They want to remove the current population of Gaza through forced displacement and by mass murder. It's not like, it is not like they're even hiding it either. In fact, Netanyahu and his coalition have frequently used an astonishing amount of dehumanizing language. Netanyahu even referred to the Palestinians as the people of Amalak, a statement that biblically called for the annihilation of men, women, children, as well as their livestock. The president of Israel himself is no exception. From the very beginning, he states that it's an entire nation out there that is responsible. It's not true, this rhetoric about civilians not being aware and not involved. It is absolutely not true, and we will fight until we break their backbone. Clearly, this statement shows that they're collectively blaming the Palestinians for the action of a militia that has only 30,000 members. These are just statements from the top government members. There are hundreds of examples repeated by other Knesset members, as well as military personnel. Actions speak louder than words, but their actions have yet to contradict any of their statements. Israel has already began its actions of collective punishment by starving an entire population of 2.2 million people, half of which are children, while simultaneously decimating the Gaza Strip. No hospital, home, school, location, or even U.N. building has been saved. All of it has been turned to dust and rubble. Why, you may ask? In order to remove the population, which Israel, in order to, in order to remove the population, which Israel has attempted to do openly while referring to it as voluntary migration, slowly pushing the population deeper and deeper south, trapping them in a tight corner near the Rafa border. They even held a meeting for resettlement, a move that breaches international law, where twelve Knesset members attended. The situation is so bad that they're currently on trial for the crime of genocide by the Hague. Contrary to what John Kirby has said about the case being meritless, the Hague has determined that there is in fact a case for genocide. In fact, the courts deemed it so plausible that they have even granted many of the provisions required by South Africa and require Israel to check back in a month to see what they've changed. Rather than complying with the courts, Israel has doubled down on their assault and has time and time again ignored all advice from the international community. This arrogance doesn't seem to come from nowhere. It is because of the policies of the Biden administration that Israel is aware of its immunity. Even with the worrying circumstances and rhetoric coming from Israel, Biden still stands firm with Israel despite outrage from the vast majority of the world. Josh Paul, a former director of the Political Military Affairs, responsible for the U.S. Security Assistance in Arms Transfer, resigned due to the Biden administration seemingly bypassing the usual protocol for the transfer of weapons to a foreign state. He himself called the move "short-sighted and reckless and destructive." We also continuously sold weapons and provided them with billions in financial aid despite them ignoring all advice or goals of the U.S., ignoring advice or goals the U.S. has set out for Gaza. The U.S. has even gone so far as to lobby in Sweden as to avoid a meeting to discuss Israel's breach of the Geneva Convention. I'd like to reiterate that Israel again is on trial for genocide. Many are wondering why the U.S. is going so far for Israel, and some are wondering who the hell is in charge here. Biden has been making us look like a joke to the world. Much of the conflict in the Middle East is all heating up solely because of the current genocide in the Gaza Strip, a location that has been repeatedly called an open-air prison. If the ICJ case deems Israel's actions a genocide, which it likely will, it only reiterates to the world that international law does not matter as long as you have the military capabilities, a very dangerous message to send to the world. It also makes the U.S. a complicit participant in the Gaza genocide, making us no different than China or Russia. Esteemed members of the city council, I regret to inform you all that I have to, you all that I have a lot to say but not enough time to convey everything that I can say, but I do urge you to call for a ceasefire as soon as possible. Much of the Arab community has felt forgotten and ignored. It seems like our lives don't matter, we are nothing more than token members of the country, where our presence is acknowledged but our opinions don't matter. I'd love to sit with each and every single one of you and talk more in depth about, into the situation as well as concerns of the community. If you'd like to be, if you'd like to meet, I'd be more than happy to.
Next, we have Jamaludin Amanullah, followed by Natasha Devine.
Bismillah, Hidayamana Rahim. First of all, I'd like to begin by thanking each and every one of you for giving us this opportunity to address you all on this very important matter. I address you not as an American, but as a human being. Now just ponder for a while, as a human being, just keep aside all of your, the propaganda that you hear, the prejudice that you might have in your heart, what you've seen on the media, and just think, as a human being, all of you have families. If you were going through what the entire population in Gaza of millions of peoples are going through every day, would your heart not bleed? Would you not feel sorry for them? Yes, you would, because I know each one of you is a human being, and each one of us is a creation of God Almighty. So I ask you, when is the time for you to discuss whether to table this resolution or not? Just think for a while, close your eyes, and dip down into your faith, into your humanity, and do what is right for you. Because remember, all of us will be held accountable on the day of judgment by the God Almighty, and God forbid if He will ask us for all our omissions and commissions of what we could or could not have done on the day of judgment. So fear that, my friends, and do what is right by God. Thank you so much.
Next, we have Natasha Devine, followed by Terry Breier.
Hello, greetings, fellow Peorians and people from out of town. I have some prepared remarks, but before I start, I do want to just mention that I actually kind of feel sorry for the people who came here to protest, some of them with false information. The McLuggage Bridge was not lit up for the IDF, it was lit up for the 1,200-plus Israelis who were murdered and killed. So for you to say that it's now, you know, the people who are now doing a genocide, that's completely inappropriate, because that was referring to dead people. Unless you believe the IDF is a ghost army, that's a completely false statement. I'm going to go forward with my prepared remarks now. I'm not here to persuade you to change your opinion about the conflict between Israel and Gaza. I don't have enough time to argue about thousands of years of history or change people's religious views, and frankly, none of our personal views should matter here. I'm here to inform you of the dangerous precedent that will be set in the city of Peoria and this American city in the heart of Illinois, in the heart of America, if we begin making official city resolutions regarding foreign conflicts. The city of Peoria, or any American city, should not be taking a side in any war or political conflict transpiring overseas. By doing so, the city would not only be promoting division among local people, and that is real, just to clarify, they will be inherently promoting the warfare and/or political tactics used by whichever side they side with, none of which are appropriate in any domestic American city during city during peacetime. This would also apply to taking sides in any other foreign conflict, including a war in Russia and Ukraine, conflicts between China and Taiwan, India and Pakistan, Ethiopia and Eritrea, Somalia, Somaliland, and so on. Peoria is in Illinois, within the United States, and in the end, whatever position the United States federal government ends up taking is the de facto position of any governments of the state of Illinois and subsequently the city of Peoria unless Peoria, Illinois intends to stop remitting taxes to the federal government. Calling for ceasefires, or calling for military actions, or calling for political action in foreign lands is a virtue signal, meaningless performative action, which only serves to cause conflict within the local community and does absolutely nothing whatsoever to affect the conflict in question. If you want to divide the people of Peoria, then move forward with making a resolution to take a side in a foreign conflict, because that is all such a resolution would accomplish. And that would include if you went the other way and supported Israel in this instance, or say, Ukraine in another instance. If the city of Peoria takes a side in this conflict, they'll be expected to make resolutions taking side in every future controversial conflict. Are you ready to take time of a part-time government to research and understand and debate the history of not only the levant in this Israel-Hamas conflict, but also the history of Kevin Russ regarding the Ukraine and Russia conflict, or the history of Ethiopia and Eritrea, or the history of Somalia and Somaliland, rather than focusing on the needs of the local residents? If you take one step in this direction, you will essentially turn our city council into a billboard for political causes, upon which whoever shouts the loudest gets to spray their message. Every extremist group for either side will continue to descend upon city council, as you see here, every time a war breaks out anywhere in the world, once they know that the city council gives a platform to foreign interests. This is not what the people of Peoria want. Just because some people in Peoria agree with this, that doesn't mean we all agree. People of Peoria already have arguments and conflicts over about the actions of local government regarding local issues like businesses and infrastructures. Keep Peoria focused on the needs of the people in Peoria, not Palestinian territories, Ukraine, Taiwan, India, Germany, Ireland, or anywhere else. And I have one minute left, and I wish one further statement to say that imagine, while everybody's doing spoken word tonight and telling you to picture things in your head, imagine if Hamas was in East Peoria, and they came in and decided to do October 7th here. Would we listen to Chicago, or St. Louis, or someplace in Canada telling us how to respond? It is not the place of the city of Peoria. I care about people that are Palestinian. I care about people that are Muslims. If you really want to know how to help and defend the people of Palestine, then I recommend you look up a man called Mossab Hassan Youssef. He is the son of the founder of Hamas, and he does extensive, extensive work telling people about his experience. So if you want to learn about somebody who really experienced it, look him up. Thank you. It's inappropriate to boo people. I did not boo any of you.
Next, we have Noah... excuse me. We have Terry Breyer, followed by Noah Palm. Terry Breyer.
Terry Brink.
Brink, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Dear Mayor Ali and city council members, I urge you to support and vote for a ceasefire resolution in Palestine. Since my visit to the West Bank in the early 90s, I have noticed how conditions for the Palestinians have gotten much worse. And when I was there, Palestinians were subject to administrative detention, settlers would fire machine guns at water tanks that the Palestinians had above their houses for water, destroy olive groves, take over houses, and it's just gotten much worse in the 30 years since I've been there. President Carter was right when he wrote that Israel was apartheid state. South Africa, a country that is very familiar with apartheid, filed a referral to the International Court of Justice for an investigation into alleged war crimes committed by Israel and Gaza. On January 26th of this year, the International Court of Justice in The Hague adopted binding orders that include requiring Israel to prevent genocide against Palestinians in Gaza. Also, it asked them to enable the provision of basic services and humanitarian assistance and prevent and punish incitement to commit genocide. Over 1.5 million civilians have been displaced by the invasion of Gaza. They are in danger of starvation, malnutrition, and diseases such as cholera and PTSD. Every US tax dollar spent in Israel is less money that can be spent on domestic spending such as housing and medical care. Every dollar provided to Israel pays for the war against Palestinians. Please send a message to the federal government that Peorians do not want their money spent for the death, maiming, and displacement of Palestinians. Pass a ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Next, we have Noah Palm, followed by May Abuli. Abu Huli.
Good afternoon. My name's Noah Palm. I'm here to call for a resolution for a ceasefire. I am currently an ICC student on track to become a high school history teacher. I love history because it not only repeats itself, but it also gives context for the present. In preparation for this public comment, I did not need to look far to find a historic speech with disturbing parallels to the situation we find ourselves in today. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. needs no introduction, especially in Black History Month, but tonight I'm going to talk about one of his more unexplored speeches. In 1967, King delivered a controversial sermon at a Baptist church in Atlanta, Georgia, titled "Why I Am Opposed to the War in Vietnam." Sharp criticism was hurled at King for his position from the press, Congress, and other civil rights activists because of the concern that it would distract from the struggle for civil rights. One person told King that peace and civil rights don't mix. In other words, people were telling him to shut up and dribble. However, King had a very different perspective on the matter, and his moral compass would no longer allow him to ignore the issue. In the opening minutes, he sets the foundation of the argument on the platform of moral obligation. He stated, "I chose to speak about the war in Vietnam because I agree with Dante that the hottest places in hell are reserved for those who in a period of moral crisis maintain their neutrality." There comes a time when silence is betrayal. Like his mountaintop speech, he doesn't stop there. Despite the belief of others that expanding his civil rights struggle to include international solidarity would be detrimental to the cause, King believed that it would be detrimental not to include it. King exposes the contradiction of the United States spending $500,000 to kill one person 8,000 miles away, when the United States was only spending $57 to help one poor person here at home. Similar to how we currently give approximately $3.3 billion a year to Israel in grants under the Foreign Military Financing Program, when District 150 only has 87 cents per student for their fine arts program. In a later speech, King sums it up by saying, "The bombs in Vietnam explode at home. They destroy the hopes and possibilities for a decent America." The last major point I'll focus on is King's perspective on violence. In Peoria, I think we are all united in the struggle to end violence in our community. There are a plethora of violence prevention initiatives over the last few years from city council and non-government organizations. However, King believed that you could not condemn violence here at home when being silent about violence abroad. He stated, "I knew that I could never again raise my voice against violence of the oppressed in the ghettos without having first spoken clearly to the greatest purveyor of violence in the world today, my own government." He continues, "There's something strangely inconsistent about a nation or a press that will praise you when you say be nonviolent towards Jim Clark, but curse you when you say be nonviolent towards little brown Vietnamese children, similar to how we would say today, 'There's something strangely inconsistent about a nation or a press that will praise you when you say be nonviolent towards Derek Chauvin, but curse and damn you when you say be nonviolent to little brown Palestinian children.'" I'm not the only one looking at this crisis through the historical lens of King. Travelers Weekly published an article last month by Mark Lampkin titled "What Would King Be Doing Today?" Lampkin agrees and says that he believes that King would likely rail against President Biden for being silent on the bombing of innocent people in Palestine. Another thing I wanted to say, and I didn't write this down, but how many people here are supporting the ceasefire? Please raise your hand. Behind me stands a multinational, multi-ethnic, multi-generational, bisexual, gay, straight, trans, cis... everybody is here supporting a ceasefire, supporting a multi-religion. I don't understand how we can stay silent about something that is obviously affecting so many people in our community. So in my opinion, that is why I'm here calling for a ceasefire. I hope that you, in a period of moral crisis, you lose your neutrality. Call for nonviolence, call for peace, call for a ceasefire. Thank you.
Next, we have May Abu Huli, followed by Rabbi Milko.
Hi, everyone. Hi, Madam Mayor and honorable city council members. I am here because I was born in Gaza. I have family there. I just had 17 members of my family got killed a month ago, including displaced family who were just with them, stayed with them. My family now is in Rafah. They moved, and now we are worried about them again. Several weeks ago, Mataz Aziza is a journalist who was documenting horrors in Gaza, and he was interviewed by NBC. When he asked if he had a message for the American people, he said something that really stuck with me. He said, "Don't call yourself a free person or a free people if you can't make change. Don't call yourself a free person if you can't stop a genocide." When 27 out of 50 states have passed an anti-biocad legislation to make it illegal to boycott Israel, how can we call ourselves a free people? When hundreds of thousands of people have protested in the streets calling for a ceasefire, when people are losing their jobs for speaking against the occupation, when our government ignores...
I can tell you, we have one-hundredths of videos of Zionist killings, innocent children in Gaza. Don't let Jewish Zionists tarnish the image of normal, God-fearing Jews and Americans. The worst part is, is when a group of people try to wipe out a whole nation, and in the process, play a victim. That's the worst part. The speech I have is, I would like to begin with the Palestinian conflict specifically about the Palestinian genocide, which by the way, is the most international humanitarian crisis currently that needs our dire attention now. Innocent people are dying that have nothing to do with the war between the two governments, which is basically Hamas and Israel. You don't have to be religious to defend innocent people from war crimes. As a matter of fact, you don't have to belong to any religion to know right from wrong. The blame game can go on forever. Roughly 30 to 45% of innocent Gazans are starving, while most people are just living their daily lives normally. The Gazans need our dire help. There are Gazans that are being displaced from their homes because of the bombs and now live in the streets with no water, food, or electricity. I'm sure no religion will approve of this kind of genocide. No matter what religion you follow, all I'm saying is be human and have a heart. If this kind of genocide were to happen upon Jews or any religion, by God, I would be the first to protest against it, which by the way, a lot of respected Jews are doing. Please demand a ceasefire for the Palestinians and the real God-fearing Jews and Christians that live side by side in Palestine, as they did for over 1,000 years before the Israeli-Zionist government decided to take Palestine from Palestinians in 1948. If you really believe in humanity, you would stand up for what's right and do the right thing. Demand for ceasefire now.
Next, we have Ladonna Fishkin, followed by Ramaz Abi Akar.
Good evening. Thank you to the city council for allowing this opportunity to address the council and the community. We all want to end the loss of innocent life. We all yearn for peace. We know that Palestinian civilians suffer, but a ceasefire that precludes the demilitarization of Hamas and doesn't return the hostages will only take us back to the same dangerous situation we had on October 7th. Hamas leadership has repeatedly said they would do October 7th again and again and again until they destroy Israel. My opinion of global affairs is my opinion, and I respect that the city council has a right to their own opinions. My reason for speaking this evening is to demonstrate my support of the city council and to encourage the council to remain focused on city affairs and to not engage on global affairs. It is important for all citizens of Peoria to feel supported by the city council and to remain neutral. I personally would be happy to share anything that I, you know, perspective that I have, but I think it's very important for you to form your own, but you're welcome to contact me. Thank you.
Next, we have Ramaz Abi Akar, followed by Hind Abi Akar.
Mayor Ali and council members, I feel the urgency to take the stand in this respected public forum to focus on a noble cause. There is an ugly injustice against humanity that has been worsening in the Middle East for four months, and the USA is unfortunately turning a blind eye. Actually, instead, USA is helping the injustice being dreadfully perpetrated. Innocent people are slaughtered in front of our eyes around the clock. Plus, those who luckily escape death are having their lives scattered, their houses bombarded, and are undergoing famine, disease, and horrific living conditions. Over 28,000 souls have been killed by now. Taken side or no side, it is a genocide. What an irony. Palestinians have lived in their land for centuries, but alas, they are not at liberty to govern themselves. They've been brutally occupied by the army of another country and are deprived of their freedom. The Middle East region has been on fire constantly, constantly, for seven, eight decades, be it on the Palestinian land or on the Lebanese one. There was a horrific war every 10 to 12 years between Israel and a Palestinian component. Previous names were around the past, such as PLO, Rafah, Fatah, and other resistance groups. All are bad. The most recent war episode is on... The most recent war episode is on Gaza this time, and the enemy is named Hamas. Reasonably speaking, if occupation will continue, a new name would sprout in the near future. Gentlemen, no matter the reasons for such a horrible hysteria, there has got to be a way to stop it. It's unfortunate that the USA has chosen to veto all proposed solutions tirelessly crafted by the Security Council. A number of American cities bravely raised the red flag. We wonder why Peoria cannot do the same. We Peorians have the chance to make an indirect impact. Otherwise, a passive action on this detrimental topic would strongly stamp Peoria as lacking the humanitarian touch. Our hope is for a ceasefire support from here, for a ceasefire support from there, that would inspire the entire nation to believe in a global humanity. Oh my God, we can't wait for a permanent ceasefire. I hope Peoria will be the next in joining the righteous group, freedom and peace for all. Our friend here said that they had a bad October 7th. Maybe right. Gaza has had an October 7 version every single day in the past three months.
Next, we have Hind Abi Akar, followed by Suhal Ahuar.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council Members. I am a longtime resident of Peoria and a member of Peoria Coalition for Palestine. We are here to ask you to support a ceasefire resolution in Gaza. A ceasefire to give an injured toddler the chance to be stitched or amputated with anesthesia, to give a baby a chance to drink clean water, to sleep without the terrifying sounds of massive bombs exploding nonstop, without the heart piercing, sounds of fighter jets diving to bomb their homes, to give a father the chance to dig up his children from the rubble of their house where they died most excruciating slow death. A house that has not been destroyed by force of nature, but by a superpower deliberately acting to decimate everything the people in Gaza have built with their blood and tears. In this country, when few schoolchildren are senselessly shot and killed in their school, the whole country, all of us, 334 million, are horrified. Imagine the number of children killed in Gaza, ripped to pieces, burned to death, buried alive, are as many as all the children in Peoria School District. 12,000 of them in a small population of 2.3 million. Imagine the horror. More than 28,000 civilians killed out of 2.3 million, a population less than the Chicagoland. A similar number in the US, God forbid, will be 40 million, with an M, million, a rate of killing and destruction unprecedented in history. This genocide is of local interest and local impact. We all have, we all have paid for every bomb, every bullet, every bulldozer used to destroy any semblance of life and to annihilate the population of Gaza. Our government has supported unconditionally this genocide against our values, our morals, and our laws. A continuation of unconditional support for the occupying apartheid state of Israel for the last 75 brutal, excruciating years. I have experienced that brutality in 1982 in Lebanon, and in 2006, and when you experience that brutality, you will never, ever forget it. And it's paid by the US. This is why it is our issue, every single one of us. You can, you can choose to say, "I want the genocide. I don't care about the genocide. I want it to continue unabated, no consequences, no red lines." Not speaking up, is calling, or calling for a ceasefire, is saying yes. There is no third option. Please be brave and don't be intimidated by a loud extremist minority. We here are the majority. And I want you to be our voice and the moral compass for this country. Say loud, clear, and proud, "We stand for a durable ceasefire. Let it play in Peoria." Thank you.
Next, we have Suhal Ahuar, followed by Darcy Cady.
Madam Mayor, Honorable Councilmen, thank you for listening to us, taking your time to listen to us. My name is Suhal Alhuar. I've been living here for a couple of decades in Peoria. I'm a professor at Bradley University, and we are all citizens. First, let me start by greeting you with the Muslim greeting, "Peace be upon you." And what's really interesting is that Muslims are quite often in the mass media being like, you know, presented as violent, as not peace-loving, while they follow the only religion in the world that extracts its name from peace, and that's Islam, which basically comes from the word Salam, which is peace. So, "Peace be upon you all." We are citizens of a nation that is one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. These concepts that I have always believed in and cherished, and they should be the norm for humanity as a whole. However, I'm deeply distraught by the stance our government has taken lately vis-à-vis the plight of the Palestinian people and the genocide being perpetrated by Israel against them. A stance that is dividing our country into three groups. Those who think that human rights are limited to a certain group of people and who are consequently, unconditionally, supporting the Israeli genocide. Those who are not taking a clear stand, and those who value the sanctity of a human life and are trying their best to push for Israeli war machine to be stopped. The Biden administration is creating a division between the people and showing that liberty and justice are not for all people to enjoy. The Palestinian people have been under brutal occupation for more than 75 years, and the 2.3 million people living in Gaza have been under a total blockade since 2007. We are talking here about an area that is about one-fourth of the Peoria County area. But listening to the mainstream media and the Biden administration will make one think that Israeli war against Palestinian people in Gaza and the West Bank, it's not a war against Hamas, is the result of October 7th attack by the Palestinian resistance. They never tell you however, above the attacks that the Israeli army and settlers have been inflicting on the Palestinian people on a daily basis since 1948. They tell you about the 240 prisoners that were taken by the Palestinian resistance, and again, it's not just Hamas, there are many factions. But they never tell you about the more than 5,000 Palestinian civilians, including women and more than 1,500 children that are being held hostage by Israel without any charges and in the direst conditions. Did anyone ask themselves where the more than 300 Palestinian women and children who were released by Israel in exchange with Israeli women and children came for and why they were being held by Israel in the first place? Our president and others in his administration repeated lies, and we heard some lies here on this floor today. Were presented by Israel as facts to justify the brutal war being perpetrated on the Palestinian people. We know now that the only beheaded babies are those who were beheaded by Israeli bombings of heavily populated civilian areas. We saw videos and pictures of them. And the only women that were assaulted are those who were assaulted by Israeli soldiers in the streets of the West Bank and the Israeli jails. And these, and these, and these were, are very well documented in many various organizations, including some Israeli peace-loving people's organizations. We now know that Mohammedani Hospital and Associated Church were bombed by Israel, not by a stray rocket from the resistance. And yes, there are Palestinian Christians living in Gaza. We now know that there were no control and command centers in the Urshifa Hospital, and that the famous list was just a calendar with the names of the days written on it, not the names of guards, of hostages. The war on the Palestinian people has been going on for more than 75 years, and it's got to stop. This war, like the ones before it, will not bring peace. Only peace brings peace. Isn't it enough if more than 28,000 people, including more than 12,000 children and more than 8,300 women, have been killed? Isn't it enough that more than 68,000 people, including 87,000 women and 6,400 children, have been wounded? Isn't it enough that 7,000 people are still missing under the rubble? 36,000 residential units destroyed, 322 educational facilities, 11 of 35 hospitals only remain functional? And the list keeps going. Consider this, every hour in Gaza, every hour in Gaza, 15 people are killed, with six being children, 35 people are injured, 12 buildings are destroyed. Palestinians had nothing to do with the Holocaust, but they are living a Holocaust right now. It's not, it's not a question of being liberal, conservative, Democrat, or Republican, or even an anti-Israel. It's a question of either being on the side of humanity or against it. You either have humanity in you, or you don't. If you ask to have the courage to join a number of other cities in the US to pass a resolution for an immediate ceasefire in Palestine, that is in Gaza and in the West Bank, thank you for your time. Sorry for going over time.
Next, we have Darcy Cady, followed by Susan Katz.
Good evening, Council Members, Madam Mayor, Dr. Ali. Thank you for hearing our concerns tonight. I would like to address everyone in the room to take a moment, and that we respect the distinguished council and the space where we display a freedom of speech. It is a tremendous honor in this nation that we have the ability to do so. It deserves to be honored. Truth will prevail. I have struggled to put my thoughts into words leading up to today. I am here to request a ceasefire resolution be taken to a vote by the council. I ask this of you because of the humanitarian crisis and genocide taking place in Palestine. Before asking this of you all, I had to first ask myself, am I taking the mail to the right address? And then, is what I'm asking the council to do reasonable given their role? And I feel the answer to both at this time is yes. While we are requesting a ceasefire resolution to be voted on and supported by multiple government officials, multi-government levels, as a local grassroots coalition, it makes sense that we should start by taking our concerns to local leaders and all of you on City Council. Furthermore, what I and other ceasefire supporters are asking each of you to do is reasonable given your role because of the direct ties that tax dollars from local citizens have in funding the humanitarian crisis currently. I am well aware that each of you were voted into your roles based upon how you could help the community locally, and international diplomacy in this space will feel like a reach. But that's not what I am asking of you. What I am asking, by having a ceasefire resolution taken to a vote, is that you serve the best interests of the community locally by openly supporting what we, the community, do not want our local tax dollars going towards. We do not want to support a humanitarian crisis. The loss of life is horrifying. 30,000-plus Palestinians killed since October 7th. Innocent people, and that is who I speak for. Innocent people. Palestinians bombed in the north, and then fleeing further south to Khan Yunis and later Rafah, all while being shot at while fleeing violence and carpet bombed, being killed and maimed on the way to their next refugee camp. One of the most disturbing things about this is that, excuse me, Israeli forces want innocent Palestinian civilians to leave an area, so they drop leaflets from the sky, telling them to take to the road what direction to flee and leave by a certain time, such as sundown or the next day. In principle and in theory, this sounds reasonable. What proceeds to happen is not. They are shot and carpet bombed along designated passageways to the next destination. Why would the Israeli military be killing people in an area deemed safe that they designated openly as safe, both passage and for arrival? Why is the Israeli military killing journalists and medical staff at unprecedented rates daily if their only goal is neutralizing a terrorist threat? Every single doctor cannot be a terrorist. Every single journalist, 135, cannot be a terrorist. You do not police truth and the people who potentially reveal it unless you have a motive, which is to sequester it, to kill it. Every single innocent child cannot be a terrorist. At some point, we have to acknowledge collectively as a community, as a whole, that what is going on defies logic and is inhumane. Or else what do we stand on as a community, as a people? I am asking that each of you on the council exercise your privilege as individuals selected by the community for your wisdom, foresight, and leadership, to please support a ceasefire resolution, to please account for the local impact of an international crisis that therefore gives you just cause to represent your community on this matter. Thank you.
Next, we have Susan Katz, followed by Hassan Neve.
Mayor Ali and Council Members, there's a lot here to unpack tonight, and I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity. I think we all agree that killing babies is wrong, but I didn't hear any mention of the dead babies in Israel that were massacred on October 7th. And I didn't hear Hamas mentioned much tonight. Hamas is an internationally recognized terrorist organization that killed 1,200 innocent Israelis, women, men, grandfathers, Holocaust survivors, babies and young children, and took 240 of them as hostages into Gaza. These are not resistance fighters, these are terrorists. These same, and I also noticed a complete lack of respect when we say something- when we say something that you don't agree with. Please let us speak as we let you speak. Thank you. And I am speaking the truth when I say that Hamas brought this war on, that Israel did not seek this war, and Hamas has been oppressing the Palestinian people since they were elected in 2007. And yes, there is proof of the massacre. And I could give anybody the website who's interested. It is horrific, absolutely horrific. I couldn't look at it. It reminds me very sadly, when I hear people deny what happened on October 7th, the way people in this country reacted to Holocaust survivors when they came over after World War II. Many of them started to speak about what happened to them in the camps, and people absolutely denied it and didn't believe that it happened, and they shut down. And we found that the Nazis had documented everything, just as Hamas did. So we have documentation, we have proof. The war is with Hamas, not with the Palestinian people. We grieve the deaths-
Hold it, hold it, Ms. Katz, please stop. Anybody who talks when someone else is up speaking, I'm gonna ask security to remove them.
The deaths on both sides. War is horrible, and we'd like to see it end. But until it ends with Hamas returning the hostages and becoming demilitarized, Israel will face October 7th again and again and again. And they cannot do that, well, they have a responsibility to defend their citizens. That being said, and there's so much more, because I cannot address all of the pieces of information that I feel were incorrect, were presented to you tonight. Clearly, this is a very complicated and divisive issue, which is why I ask city council to please not consider a ceasefire resolution. This is beyond what we can fix. This is beyond city council's mission. This will further divide your community, which is already, as you see, divided. I pray for peace, I think we all pray for peace, but I don't think a ceasefire resolution by the Peoria City Council is going to get us any closer to peace. Thank you.
We have Hassan Neveu, Hassan Neveu, followed by Malik Ahmed.
Thank you, representatives, for allowing us the opportunity to sleep, speak. I think it is very important as residents of the community to respect each other, and in that regard, I hope future people can respect you guys. And I was disheartened to hear the way they reacted when you guys spoke. That being said, I'm also surprised to hear why this issue is controversial. A ceasefire does not mean picking a side. I do understand, though, that some of my fellow residents have fears about Hamas, and Hamas has been designated as a terrorist organization. But it is important to understand how organizations like this arise. If you, if a child has seen their parents, their siblings, their grandparents, all killed, and they grow up in an atmosphere where they do not have any opportunities, how can you expect that person to become anything but an extremist? The US has personally experienced this through our 20-year adventure in Afghanistan. We did not defeat Afghanistan or the people over there by bombing them out, because what you do is create a next generation of terrorists. After the US defeated Germany in the First World War, they imposed harsher sanctions on the Germans, and it resulted in the horrible regime of Nazis. Imposing bad conditions on your enemies does not create friends. To truly create friends, you have to give those people opportunities. Now, I understand that it is not the right place to debate foreign policy. However, it is the right place, I think, to talk about the feelings of the citizens of Peoria. Residents, residents over here have mentioned how they lost family members. Residents have mentioned how they know people who have been killed. Addressing those things are a part of, I think, your jobs. Therefore, I hope, I hope that in the land of Lincoln, and the person who pursued freedom for other people, that you sign on to this resolution as a symbol for what Peoria stands for. We cannot delegate foreign policy just to the federal government. Peoria, like other small cities, can constantly not be ruled over. We have to show that we have a voice, and by signing on to this resolution, that is what we will do. Thank you.
We have three more speakers. The order is Malik Ahmed, Jonathan Voto, and Keisha Hess.
Your Honor, Madam Mayor, and city council members, everybody. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. I'm gonna start with a simple story. The story, once upon a time, in a community, there is a family, big family, and they have a big land in their backyard. So that family is very, very good family. All community people, they know very well. Suddenly, there is a powerful person in that community. Everybody kind of get, they, they listen to him, he's very powerful. There's no way that you cannot, you know, avoid him. So one day, that powerful person came with a needy family that was very needy, and they were kind of forcefully out from some other neighborhood, and asked that family member that, can you please give him, give him the shelter? This family, a small family, just give him shelter. You have a lot of back, big backyard, so give him shelter. So that family being very generous, very good, very naive. It's okay, no problem, let them live there. So they build a house in the back, and they started living there. Fine, no problem, their brothers, sisters, they're all, you know, just like a family members. So eventually, what they do, that new family, they started building another building there. And the, the main family, they said, why are you doing that? I gave you the shelter, now you'll be building another house there and bringing another people there. Why are you doing that? You cannot do that. So they called the powerful person, and the powerful person said, no, it is fine, let them do that, they're not harming you. It continues. So eventually, those people, the people, the new people, they were, those are sheltered, or given shelter, try to evacuate forcefully the owner of the main house, who originally gave the shelter, let's call them Family A. So they're trying to, you know, take the people out, out of their house, and doing all kind of thing with the, with the help of that powerful person. So it's not working, and then those are the naive people, good people. So whatever they're doing, there's no other choice for them other than to kind of get used to it that way and try to kind of solve those things. So this passes, this passes. Their children see that their fathers, their uncles, the living in the main Family A has been forcefully out, and they're tolerating to some extent. At some point, one day, Family B, those are sheltered, let's call this Family B, they were, you know, kind of out of their house, they went on vacation some other places. And meanwhile, before a few days, the Family A, they're trying to gathering some people, good people around in the community, that, to help them. That hey, this is what is going on, can you please help us? Something's going wrong there. So those people, okay, we can help you that. So they tried to help also, but nothing worked. So the Family, Family A, with those, those people, one day, everybody was on vacation or some other place, going outside from Family B, they tried to come out and, you know, out of angry, completely out of anger, they kind of shut the door, shut the, sorry, banged the door and did all, all kind of things there, right? Show out of their anger. And took one people, there are one or two people in those Family B, ABs, and B1, B2, B3 houses, one or two people in their house, and tried to communicate with them, that okay, tried to resolve the issue, that hey, your Family Bs are doing this, can you please resolve this one, or those kind of things? Now Family B came, everybody, guess what they eradicate? They forcefully out everybody from there, kill the people there, kill the children there, and all Family A is gone. That is the end of the story. My honorable Madam Mayor, you just tell me, that day, what he did, Family A, out of oppression, because their, their back was against the wall, nothing to do. They cannot do anything else, only to raise their voice with their little power. They know their little power, they cannot do anything else. Only thing they did, just raise, show their anger. Show their anger, please don't do that.
Thank you.
Show their anger.
So please- Your time's up.
Please, just ceasefire, please.
Next, we have Kishan, excuse me. Next, we have Jonathan Voto, followed by Kishan Hess.
One more speaker, I think. I kind of want to keep it specific and pointed. April 2023 was the last city council election for the at-large members, I believe, just the at-large, if I'm correct, maybe I'm not. But I do remember voter turnout was about 16%. It put Kelly, Euler, Vespa, Gordon Young, I think you're at-large. I'm pretty sure, I think those are all the outlarges. I'm not sure. It put a few of you here at 16% voter turnout. 2021, that election for the districts and for mayor, had a, on average, I think it's 17% voter turnout. Mayor, your, your margin of victory was 43 votes. Graham, you beat Kobak by like 200, 250, maybe? I think Rigenbach, you had a much healthier or much safer margin of, it was, it was larger, I don't remember what. Alan, you ran unopposed, didn't even have to sweat. I bring this up because I think you should consider, by what mechanism are you here? Which Peorians put you here? When you say that you are here for the Peorians, what do you mean? Because it looks like you are here for some Peorians, a few Peorians. I don't think we should be clapping, because a part of, part of this, I don't know which camera to look at, but there's a camera, is it that one or is it that one? That leads to YouTube and to TV or whatever? Where is everybody? If the other 70,000 eligible voters knew that they could be as involved in local politics as they could be, would any of you still be here? And would we be doing this tonight? Or, or would there be people here who would have known well enough, after 30,000 dead civilians, that they could, they could push the needle as to, as to what the public opinion is? I, I, it's frustrating, I, it's frustrating. But I do want to make, make notice that like, how many people are here tonight? I think maybe some people have left, but there was maybe 100 people here? That, that's enough to change your margin of victory. If by the next election, we were to theoretically have 50% voter turnout, I think this, this horseshoe looks a lot different. And I think you should really consider which way that skews for you. I, I respect all of you. I, I don't, I don't dislike any of you personally, I don't know any of you. But politically, collectively, I think this horseshoe is garbage. I, I constantly have, I, I watch, I watch every meeting on YouTube, and constantly, there are so many things I want to say. There's things I want to say about the agenda tonight. I, I mean, regarding parking and regarding development on the 800 block of Adams, but it's not really that important tonight. I, you know, I want to comment about the buying the water company, which you failed to do. I, what I want to say right now is that I've been watching this, this collection of people fumble around pretty low-impact issues, short-term rentals. You, you punt that around over and over again, as if, as if one person, having to put up with one party one time, is the epitome of plight in this city. And yeah, it's, sure, it's important stuff, but I don't know, I don't know. I'm rambling, and I'm sorry for that. But I, I don't think, if there's an, if Adam Smith has an invisible hand, why is that invisible hand building so many bombs to go to the Middle East? 19 seconds, ceasefire now.
Next, next, we have Keisha Hess, and then our last speaker is Zachary Gettrich.
Hello, my name is Keishon Hess. I am a substitute teacher. I've been doing nonprofit work to leave Peoria any way I can for the last two years. I passionately heard a lot of the words here, I was moved by some of them. Firstly, I would like to say genocide and war is sprouted from the seed of injustice, and injustice anywhere is an injustice everywhere. So there isn't any confusion with my next following words. I would like to say, I support the ceasefire, I don't support war anywhere. I'm here to talk about the injustice in Peoria. I simply want to ask the people behind me, a lot of you have said you guys are the voice of Peoria. I would like to know where is this outpour and all this clamor when many children in Peoria die from gun violence and other types of violence? I have memories of students who I would never see again. One of them, his name was Marion, he had a beautiful smile, he played sports, and he loved doing art at Peoria High. I'm not here to take away from anybody's struggle, I'm simply here to put eyes back on Peoria and the problems we face in the city. Once again, my name is Keishon Hess. Other than that, everybody have a nice night.
Zachary Gettrich, followed by Celine Corley.
Hello, I'm Zachary Gettrich. And here we are in the United States of America, where we're all equal. I'm equal to my dear friend Andre. I'm equal to my dear friend Zach. I'm equal to my dear friend Rigenbach. I'm even equal to Mr. Growth over there! And that's what the ceasefire actually calls for. It is about equality. It says Hamas needs to stop, and Israel needs to stop. It says Hamas needs to release- It says Hamas needs to release its hostages, and Israel needs to release the 8,000 Palestinian hostages that it has. And I heard a Zionist recently said, they're not hostages, they're, they're prisoners because they were convicted of, they're criminals! Remember, the Palestinian hostages were put through sham military tribunals, no objective judge, no impartial jury, just a bunch of racist IDF soldiers judging on them. And by that logic, Hamas could do a whole bunch of sham trials on the hostages they have, and then they would be prisoners, they would be legitimate prisoners according to what the Zionists say. And I started this by pointing out that we're all equal, because I believe we're all equal, everybody here believes we're all equal, but the Zionists don't believe that they're equal. They're a special people, they're God's chosen people. And because they are better than all of us, they don't have to follow our rules, they don't have to follow international rules at all, because they're better than the rest of us. I don't believe that, I believe we are all equal here, I have to follow the same rules as everybody else here, and I uphold that. It's fundamental, but they don't believe that, they are a people unlike any other people, and therefore, they're allowed to do whatever they want, no matter how many children are murdered, no matter how many innocent hostages that they take, women, children, children that were, that have actually been verified that they were sexually assaulted and raped in Israeli torture dungeons. And that's what this ceasefire says, this ceasefire supports equality. People that oppose the ceasefire don't. They don't support equality, they support the continuing idea that somehow they're superior to everyone else, and they don't have to follow anybody's rule, they don't have to follow international rules, they're allowed to do whatever they want because they're special, and that guarantees that they can simply do more, and there's not going to be any consequences for them. And it's very unfortunate. And so, yes, we should have a ceasefire, I would also point out that the people that say they want the Israeli hostages back so much, except for two, that just happened two days ago, every single Israeli hostage that Israel has gotten back has only occurred during a ceasefire! That's it, that's the only time they've ever gotten hostages back, except two just a couple days ago! In fact, there were three IDF soldiers that were kidnapped by Hamas that the IDF then murdered when they were trying to escape, they had no shirt on, they're yelling in Hebrew, they got a white flag, but the Hannibal Doctrine, which is an Israeli doctrine that basically says you can do anything you want to prevent any Israelis or IDF from being taken hostage, including killing them, the Hannibal Doctrine says, well, might as well, they killed their own people. It's terrible. So common sense would say, well, a ceasefire, based off of all the evidence we have, is the singular best way to get Israeli hostages back, because it's the most effective, they got the most hostages back by then. And in fact, there have been recent ceasefires presented that would release all the remaining Israeli hostages, and at least some of the 8,000 Palestinian hostages. I mean, it would be completely disproportionate, but that's because the people that believe that they're better than everybody else don't view the Palestinian, they barely even view the Palestinians as humans as it is. So, of course, you could trade 1,000 Palestinian hostages for one Israeli hostage, because maybe, maybe you're starting to get equal then. So for those reasons, you should support a ceasefire, thank you.
Celine Corley.
Thank you, Council and Madam Mayor, for allowing us to talk tonight. I'm going to keep this short, I would just like to say that, for those tonight stating that we should keep global politics out of the Peoria City Council meeting, I simply would like to draw attention to the fact that as of 2014, the city of Peoria is sister cities to Aythu, Lebanon, Lebanon, who is neighbors to the people of Israel and the Palestinian people, Lebanon, who is taking in nearly 500,000 registered Palestinian refugees, 500,000 people, children and women fleeing for their lives. It is important to remember this sister city that we share, and as Lebanon takes in more and more Palestinian refugees, it is important to remember that because of this relationship that we have with Lebanon, this war does affect Peoria as well. I come forward today as a citizen of Lebanon, and a citizen of the United States, and a citizen of Peoria. I come today asking that the conversation for a ceasefire remains present within this council, thank you.
Our last, our final speaker is Alyssa McMillan.
I, like everyone else, would like to thank you for the opportunity to be here and for you all to listen to us. I want to focus on a term to start off, that term is disproportionate. There has been a disproportionate amount of violence towards Palestinians as opposed to the violence that has been towards Israel. 1,200 Israelis were killed by Hamas, 240 hostages were cast, captured. Israel holds 4,500 Palestinian prisoners, of which 310 are being held in administrative detention without the right to a trial, many women, many are children. There's also disproportionate coverage. While some outlets are getting a little better, many mainstream news outlets are being disproportionate in the details they are providing in what has happened to Palestinians as compared to the details pertaining to the Israelis and the IDF. There's been a disproportionate use of compassion towards the victims, whether they be from Israel or Palestine, in terms used to describe people and the things that are happening to them. News agencies are referring to young Israelis as children, whereas Palestinians are referred to as minors. The words we use are incredibly important in showing humanity to all humans. And without access to independent sources, we would gather from the disproportionate coverage, as mentioned before, that October 7, 2023, was the beginning of the struggle between Palestinians and Israel. Though in 1948, the Nakba, which I've learned is an Arabic term for catastrophe, occurred with the mass displacement and dispossession of Palestinians of their land during the Arab-Israeli War. Based on research, Palestine used to be a multi-ethnic and multicultural society consisting of Christians, Jews, and Arabs. During the Nakba, dozens of massacres targeting Arabs were conducted, and about 400 Arab-majority towns and villages were depopulated, either being completely destroyed, like we've seen in Gaza and Khan Yunis, or repopulated by Jewish residents and given new Hebrew names. Given the recent narrative regarding our own country's genocidal history, this is an act of violence through land theft and ethnic or racial supremacy. These Palestinians mentioned in 1948 were pushed in majority, in majority to the Gaza Strip, 200,000 then. Since, Israel has waged 15 collective wars against Gaza. These illegal settlements and abhorrent acts of violence and collective punishment and international war crime must no longer be funded by our tax dollars. We are now nearing 30,000 deaths of innocent Palestinians, the IDF has given the same excuse for these killings time and time again. More than 12,000 of those killed have been children. To bring up the disproportionate term once more, we have seen with our own eyes via independent sources, the most gruesome images I have ever seen. We are simply not seeing the same imagery of violence on innocent Israelis. Israel is withholding access to life-saving food, water, and electricity. Withholding this electricity has resulted in the death of eight babies. We watched these babies taken from their incubators, crowded together with no access to oxygen in a large open container, exposed to an unsanitary and dangerous condition, conditions. Hospitals, mosques, universities, grocery stores, UN shelters have all been destroyed. Hamas has offered to release all of the hostages in exchange for a ceasefire, and Netanyahu has made it very clear that the attacks on Palestine will not subside until their absolute victory. That victory, to me, seems like an annihilation of Gaza and the Palestinian people, and a complete theft of their land. Thank you.
That concludes our, our public comment for tonight, and I just want to thank everyone for coming out and expressing your heartfelt expressions, you took your, your first amendment rights to this podium, and you let us know your views, they're not all in agreement, but you let us know your views, so I just, I thank you for that. Also, I, I have, well, after the meeting, I will have released a statement that will be found on the city's homepage under the news section. At this point, I'm going to turn to Madam Clerk, and we're going to move forward.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I just want to note for the record that we did receive eight citizen letters with regards to requesting the council to pass a ceasefire resolution, and those will be placed in my office on file.
Okay, thank you.
So, and with that, we are at executive session.
Okay. I would like to invite a motion to adjourn and to convene in closed session immediately following the adjournment of the city council meeting pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5ILCS 120/2C11, to discuss the pending improbable or imminent litigation pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5ILCS 120/2C21, for approval by the body of closed session minutes. Moved by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilman, Councilmember Gordon Young, Council, I mean, corporate, Corporation Council Hayes?
Yes.
Did you want to say something?
Oh, ma'am.
Oh, okay, your light was on, sorry. Please cast your ballots. Thank you for your service.
Ceasefire now! Ceasefire now! Ceasefire now! Ceasefire now!